We are ready.
Are you ready? Okay, are you ready Nick?
I will be.
Still 3:59 according to Verizon. Oh.
Verizon spoke.
Verizon spoke, we have four o'clock. Five minutes.
Okay. Okay, it's four o'clock. And so I'd like to call the meeting of the Madera County Arts Authority Board together and thank our visitors for coming today. Today, we are not going to have Mr. Wieland. He called me this morning and said that he was ill. We are also not going to have Mr. Gillis today from the school district who is going to give us a report because he called today and said he tested positive for COVID. So, it's us, okay? And we'll work around, we'll be able to talk some things about Mr. Gillis's report. But, sorry, he won't be able to be here. Okay, item number one is additions to the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda today?
There are no additions.
Okay, thank you. Then let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, yes, I will. Please stand. Ready, salute. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is public comment. Members of the public may address the board on any matter under the jurisdiction of the board but not appearing on the agenda, the board will not take action on any items presented other public comment. Do we have any public comment today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the public session. And first, we have consideration of the approval of minutes of the February 28th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll approve, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment from the audience? Any other concern from the board? All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4B is the Treasurer's Report. We'll call on Mr. Poitras, he has three items this afternoon under the Treasurer's Report. And we'll approve that, we'll consider that as one item.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to point out the Citizens Business Bank statement showing a balance as a 531 of $72,985.30. That does tie into our financial statement, the income statement ending 6/27/22. That is, reflects the income statement from the inception of the organization. That ties in, and then the balance sheet shows the asset of $72,985, less accounts payable. And accounts payable are, consists of four statements from Losano Smith for services as well as a, an invoice from the Golden State Risk Management Authority for our liability insurance. And with that, are there any questions? The action would be the, to approve the authorization of payment of the warrants in the amount of 557.15 Losano Smith attorneys as well as $1,487 to Golden State Risk Management Authority.
Any questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. With a motion, we can approve all three items under the Treasurer's Report as one. So is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report?
I move to approve the Treasurer's Report as stated.
It's moved by Mrs. Fleek and seconded by Mr. Rayagus. It was coming, so, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 4C is a discussion, discussion and consideration of a Madera County Arts Authority logo. We would like to provide direction or approve a proposed logo today. So hopefully, we can narrow this down and get it on our letterhead and get going. The day's the day. Hi, welcome back, Mr. Artist.
Let's do it.
Yep, so I have them ready on. So these are the renditions I came up with last time we had our, we finalized our design and now we just had to, I just had to mess with the fonts and colorations. So, as we go through, number one has kind of a brush stroke to it. And I will note that all of them except for where it says the alt palette color have the same kind of theme, kind of the, what, what was given on our inspiration. Number two there, Chuck had some input on that one, had some broader brush stroke and he liked the alt palette color number two, or number one there. Then, we have three where it's the, kind of the blocked letters, cursive underneath. Then we have number four, kind of the script with the block letters underneath. And we have our alternate color palette two there. And three is the script with script. Four, I'm sorry, six through eight were kind of more similar to our inspiration. On six, we have the As both facing the same direction as, as it was typed. Seven, one of the As is reverse, kind of like the inspiration. And then finally, on eight, we have a bigger M with the As in two different directions there. So that's them in color and in black and white, this is what they look like. Of course, it can be any solid color. And I didn't know that was a concern of the board, what would they look like in solid colors? So there's that, back to color there.
Okay, so, thank you. It looks like one, number three, is in block letters. And then we have a couple of swish opportunities in one and two.
Yes.
And then, and, and then we have, in four and five, we have similar script. And then in six through eight, we have, okay. Could we talk about script first?
Yes.
Script first? Because that's like the major difference in all.
I'd be happy to lead out. I really like number three. I think it's, you know, superior in terms of its presentation, it's very crisp, very professional looking, and it looks really good in black and white as well. So that would be my, my choice.
Somebody else want to ask a question or give a thought? Otherwise, I'm going to turn it out to the people who are in the audience for any input that you might have one way or the other for the board. And if you do, would you please just come up to the podium here?
Madam Chair, are you looking for opinions or thoughts or?
Yes. Just come on up and give us your thought or opinion.
I must have not been around for this round of, of changes. My, my vote goes for number three.
And could you explain why, what your thinking is?
Similar to what Rob mentioned, it's, the letters are easy to read, they're solid. When that goes smaller, it's, it's still going to be easy to read and you can clearly see that it's NCAA even when the letters below are, are too small to read. And I'm probably going to put my foot in my mouth here, but that's a, it's an artist's palette, right?
Good.
I got it.
You're getting better at this.
Yeah.
Okay, you want to announce who you are?
Debbie Bray, Madera Chamber of Commerce. I concur that I like number three and for the same reasons because a lot of times when you go to reduce your logo size, whether it be for better head or a business card, start losing the ability to read it so the block letters work well. Along those same lines, the bottom of the palette have the yellows. I would almost recommend that you take your blues and greens for the bottom of the palette because the same thing will happen with yellow, the smaller you start reducing it, you're going to actually start fading, blending that yellow into the background of any stock or paper that it printed on. It's great if you're using it just for digital needs, but once you start doing print, I think that yellow, but maybe to pull some of the green.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. You do a lot of that kind of public relations and advertising kind of stuff, so that's, that's very helpful to us. Okay, I'll pull back to the board now. I also had a question about the yellow because it seems like that's going to fade away very quickly. So can you go back to the? Can you go back to the samples? Oh. But it's okay. Aren't we all?
I think number three makes it easier to go down to reading Madera County Arts Authority.
Oh, okay.
It's clearer.
It's clear, you're not getting caught so much up. We're going to talk about that next though, the print for that. Okay, but yeah, see how that swirl on the bottom is pretty yellow? Can you make that a different?
So, I do have a palette, one here, this one was more of county colors I think I went with. It is darker, it uses the orange instead of going full to yellow. And then, there's this other one that kind of goes through the, the color wheel as, is there.
Okay, but see, it's got the yellow.
Yeah, so, so.
Oh, you would use the, what you're saying on the top part, you'd use that on the bottom part? Or you?
We, we could, yeah, we could change, change out the yellow so that way it doesn't blend as much. And we can just go to orange instead. So similar to this bottom part here where it does kind of go into yellow but not as intense as the one next to it.
Okay, you can't make it the blue-green.
Oh yeah, we could, we can, yeah, I can, I can finish this, this pattern up where it goes the, the blue-green here as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I like that, that's kind of short.
Okay. And then you guys were saying?
Yeah, now in the, the Madera County Arts Authority, you've got some in script and some in?
In block. So, so I did have only one in block. So, you guys were talking about scalability, so having it in, both in that block, is that, would that be something you guys would be interested in or?
I'm happy with it being in script if the other part's in block. Then we're not too boring.
So, we're talking about this three with this alt palette color and just continue the, the green-blue on the bottom instead?
Right.
Okay. Okay, if that's, yeah, I can make that happen and?
Okay. Well, then we're going to need a motion to consider item number three.
I make a motion.
Okay.
Number three.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Mr.?
A second.
All right, Mr. Poitras, there's a second. Any other, any other comment from the audience? Any other discussion from the board? All in favor of number three, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
So now, Nick, are you going to get a, a letterhead kind of sample put together so we can, that's something we can use? Yeah, great. Okay, thank you very much.
Any festive colorations that you can make up in the future, let me know, I can help you guys with that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, did a great job, appreciate it.
Okay, item 4D. Let me just preface item 4D by recalling our mission here in the Arts Authority. And our mission and purpose is to see to it that we end up with a cultural arts center for Madera and downtown Madera. And everything that we're working on is helping us move in that direction. And that cultural arts center is going to include the vigilante performing arts, okay? So it's, sometimes it seems like we're moving at a snail's pace, but we seem to be moving a little bit forward all the time. And so we're going to today get reports from several people who are working on several pieces of our, our progression towards the arts center. We decided that at the beginning of this, that our first effort should be to increase the number of people downtown Madera. We need to increase our events, increase our presence, increase opportunities for people to get out and try to focus it in downtown so we can build up interest in, and, in our area. So, item number one is an update regarding the county receipt of a salvaged beam from the 9/11 Twin Towers attack and the Courthouse Park remodel. And that's a major kind of undertaking that's going to bring a lot of people into the downtown area. Nick's been working with the beam and the county's been working with the remodel of Courthouse Park. So, I'll turn it over to Nick Salinas for an update there.
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nick Salinas, Chief of Staff with Madera County. Can we get our slide deck pulled up? As Chair O'Kane noted, we are the recipients of a 14-foot, 3,000-pound steel, steel beam from the 9/11 attacks. Initially, we were just undergoing our Courthouse Park remodel and one of our project managers shared that they got word that another county had received a like beam. So immediately, we got on the phone and we, we kind of requested one and well, we found out it wasn't that easy. They just don't hand these things out, you know? So we had to put together a really formative game plan to show how we would preserve and honor the beam and what that rendition would look like and how that would complement Madera County. So we've onboarded Melton Design Group to, to be our lead consultant. They, they specialize in park architecture and landscape design. They've done a lot of work up in Chico. He's been around for over 25 years. So here's the proposed location, it's just east of the steps of the courthouse or if you're looking at the front doors just to your left. On the west side, we have a law enforcement memorial and this open space to the, to the east, we felt would be a really nice way to complement that law enforcement memorial with a firefighter memorial. And this is just one of several improvements that you have, that'll be coming to the park here, just some circled areas that we're going to highlight future improvements with different service clubs, different people of the community that'll have an opportunity to contribute and be a part of these projects. So here is our preliminary design that we showed to Sims Metal. They were the company that was contracted to take the, the steel from the attacks. And they really like this design. One feature of it, which you'll see in a later rendition, is that we, we kind of created this to be a sundial to where when there's certain times of the morning, that beam's going to cast a shadow on a mark and that mark's going to indicate when the first tower was hit, second tower was hit, and also when the Pentagon was hit. So it's going to be, it's going to be really, really neat to see once it's all said and done. And we're going to have some donor plaque opportunities that I'll talk about here in a second. And here you are on the bottom left, these, these are those sundial markers that are going to correlate with the, with the sun casting that shadow on those marks. And so, to the right here is going to be a, a donor plaque for those who want to contribute to this project. Their names will be placed there. Along the back are going to be the, I believe it's seven or eight different fire, fighting, fighter badges that we have here countywide. And then to the left will be the story of what happened on 9/11. There's a further look from, look from a further step back, there's the cannon there to the right and then to the left is the World War II Memorial, just to kind of put this in place. So currently, we're in the preliminary design phase. We're working out all the fine details between the county staff, fire staff, and with Melton Design, we're going to, we're hoping, actually, this actually just went out to bid yesterday. I saw it on the site. And so we'll be gathering bids and we'll be doing a, a little bidder approach with this. We also have a pretty rigorous fundraising effort, so we, we're going to be offering a brick memorial pavers to the public. So those come in two sizes, four by eights and eight by eights. Then for those who want to have their name permanently engraved on the memorial here to the right, you can get into one of the bigger sponsorships. And the beams made its way around town pretty well. We had a welcoming ceremony to where we drove it up from Oakers through the ranchos into town, then eventually it ended up at Fire Station 58. Then we also had it present at the Memorial Day Celebration here at the park and was most recently at the Business Extravaganza with our very own Debbie Bray, thank you. And the next stop is going to be at the Fourth of July Fireworks Show here at the fairgrounds and then at the fair, which is going to be really nice. 9/11 actually takes place during the fair, so we're going to have a special ceremony out there that day too. And it's, last and final stop is going to be during the Old Timers' Day Parade. Part of our negotiations with the, the steel company, I chair the Old Timers' Day Parade and I, I told the folks, if you commit as this beam, I'll guarantee you a stagecoach ride right behind the beam going down Main Street the day of the parade. And they said, done. So, I want to say that they did have a hand in helping us secure the beam. So September 24th, 10:00 AM, the beam will be leading the parade. At the conclusion of the parade, we're going to be doing a beam resting ceremony to where we're actually going to have a crane present and we're going to be setting the beam on its final resting monument, so.
Where are the memorials bricks going to go?
The bricks are going to go along the sides of the entrance as you approach, so right along this walkway way here.
Okay.
Yeah, the four baits are starting, they start at $150.
That's why it says limited quantities.
Kind of just to get people to get up and go do it. Outside of that, I think it'll be a really nice monument for us to reflect and kind of remember that, that very special day. And with that, that completes my presentation on the 9/11 memorial. I could be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. So you're saying something about the brick, somebody can put your name, so anybody can, or how many going to be allowed?
Really, we're not going to put a limit on it? We just put that verbiage in there to get people to really go and?
So whoever wanted has got to pay the $150, right?
Yeah, you can go to the website.
If I want it, I got to pay the 50, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
We don't let you, we don't let you bring out your own brick, we got to make sure it came from it. But yeah.
You still don't have the, the numbers, how many can allow?
We're not going to put a limit on it, it's just?
Yeah, but maybe you have so many, what are you going to do with?
There's a lot of space, yeah.
Well, if it's a lot of space, for how much? By hundred?
Yeah, there's, I mean, the entire walkway, we can?
Quite a good space?
Depending on what we get, we can, we can?
Okay, well, I'm thinking about getting my brick.
Yeah.
I'm thinking right now, so, not yet.
Very good question, you can go to Madera911memorial.com. It's, the website's there on the, the flyer and it's really simple, you just click donate now and then there's an option to enter your credit card?
What do you call again?
And I can send the link to the board as well.
Dot com?
Dot com, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's been with the rig, we have a firefighter present and he even has a sample of the brick and you can actually see how it'll look engraved. And they're handing out these flyers and cutouts that you can take with you.
So these websites, that's the one we, we're going to pay? Okay. All right. Got it.
This is a perfect example of how we're going to get people downtown. Because there will be people bringing their students, your children, your families, there's going to be a lot of interest.
Oh, thank you. I was wondering why I couldn't hear myself.
Oh, okay.
There's going to be a lot of interest in this, I think, a lot of activities around it, so it's a good example of what we can do. Robert or Nick, how are we doing on the park remodel? Is that?
Yeah, as a whole, we, internally, we decided to, we were going to phase it out and do things over time and then we started to think that, you know, the most attract, unattractive stuff gets done first, like irrigation, your lighting. So we decided to go full bore and we're going to be doing the entire restoration all at once. And so Melton's still finishing up that full design and then probably some more community shareholder meetings will take place between the Historical Society. And I would imagine in 23, we should be breaking ground on the entire remodel in which we may be closing down the park for a pretty good duration of time, but we still have yet to get to that.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just received word that Brandon Gillis is on the WebEx. So when we get to his item, he should, he should be here for it.
He's present.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. The other, another thing we're doing is working with the City of Madera and Caltrans to do a mural project on Freeway 99 right out here. There's a wall that goes in front of the courthouse, in front of the, the new probation department DA's office and comes down here almost to Fourth Street. That wall had nothing on it. And, and so, Caltrans got a grant for us to put some color out there. And so, Mr. Core is going to tell us about how that project is going.
Good afternoon, everybody, I'm Jim Core with the Madera County Arts Council. It is my pleasure to talk a little bit about the State Road 99 Sound Wall Beautification Project. And I also have a PowerPoint presentation, thank you. There it is. So this is a partnership between Clean California, Caltrans, City of Madera, and the Madera County Arts Council. We approached probably three, four months ago about this project. It's, with the idea of the end in mind, we're still, the finer details are, are yet to be discovered and so I'll, I'll walk you through that as we, as we take you on this journey. So this is the, this is the sound wall in question. The first picture on top there is the southbound 99 right before the Fourth Street exit. And then if you were to turn around and look the other direction, that's the, that's the entire sound wall there. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. I'm blaming it on allergies. It's about 407 yards in length. I like to break things down in numbers that I can understand and so yardage is always good. It reminds me of football fields, so it's about four, four football fields, is that right, Rob? Okay, good. This one does not, is, is not great to look at on a presentation of this size, but this is an architectural drawing of the wall with the art in between. So as we go through these, there will be five sets of four panels roughly 200 feet between the panel sets. And this has already been put in place as an idea through the architect who is working with Caltrans to make this happen. So let me take you to an artist's rendering. And this is a similar picture with what would be oleander, plant covering, and then the art that you can kind of see in the middle. Now, the art, the art is going to look something along these lines. These are four foot by five foot frames. And then in those, for those, those frames will then be adhered to the wall, the sound wall. Now either side of that will be the oleanders. And then inside those frames will be? Now, either side of that will be the oleanders, and then inside those frames will be, uh, vinyl-covered foam panels. So if you think of the panel, the, uh, if you think of those, uh, foam squ- uh, squares, rectangles being four feet by five feet, and then wrapped with vinyl, that's what's going to go in there. So there's no, it's not gonna be a painted mural on the actual wall. This will provide a, a different kind of take on placing art on the sound walls. Let me give you, again, a little indication as to what that might look like. So it could potentially be paintings. An artist could create a painting, then that'll be photographed, and then the photograph will get put onto the vinyl, the vinyl will get put around the foam, and the foam will be inserted into the frame. So it could be a painting. Could be photographs. Might have something to do with, uh, agriculture, right? And then it also could be a concept where this particular picture is all one picture, but because it's done in that style, has a little bit of different flavor to it. We've talked about all kinds of different things. Would it be one artist doing all panels? Would it be a number of people doing one panel? And we're still, uh, we're still working on some of the, some of the details of that. It's a hundred thousand dollar project. City of Merced's gonna be involved, the Arts Council's going to be involved, and there's a completion date scheduled for June of twenty twenty-three.
I think you mean the City of Madera.
I'm so sorry.
You get your Ms. backwards.
I, I'm sorry, guy, you know, I've been, I've been, I, I live in Merced, and I've been working here for two years now, and I, I think I have a dyslexia problem with Merced and Madera. I apologize. It's the City of, City of Madera. Why don't you catch that for me, Nick?
I, I didn't wanna say anything. I just thought it was a nice city of Merced's helping.
I'm sorry.
You know?
Okay, all right. The guy makes one mistake, and we all can jump on.
Well, I have to say, in, in Merced's defense, um, he has, you have been working with them on murals and what they're doing in their downtown with.
Oh, yeah.
Murals and paintings and all that.
Yeah, they, they've, uh, they've done a, they've done a good job with, uh, with bringing some of those projects to life, including the painting of electoral boxes and, um, and other mural projects as well, so they're, uh, they're doing real well down in their arts district. I think that's my last slide. Questions?
Could you go back to the wall?
Sure.
Um, anybody have any questions, thoughts?
Tell me which one, Julie.
That, that one.
The one that has the, sort of the.
Yeah, my question was, I thought we were gonna do art panel, plants, art panel, plants. Are you now thinking there's gonna be one grouping, and the rest of it will be plants?
Well, again, it's hard, it's hard to get a scope of it all, but.
Oh, I see.
There's, there's like, there's a fairly large gap between each art section.
But there's five art sections.
Yeah, let me go back one more slide, and if I had a, one of those laser pointers, there's, at the top of, so that's the, that's the entire wall, but it's chopped because it needs to fit onto the architectural drawing. So in the top there, there's one, two, three art panel sets, and then on the bottom one, there's one, two, so there's five total.
Oh, okay.
Of the sets.
That was my question, too.
Yeah.
The reason I'm asking for clarification is, we have, that wall is gonna be right next to our Historical Society, so there's lots of potential photographs and pictures that might be possible in a his, history theme.
Right, absolutely.
The City of Madera wants to have a say in what goes there, uh, so we've got five different panels, it could be five different themes, um, but, um, we need to engage the city, uh, council and the city in, um, getting so policy and, uh, procedures for, for choosing that art.
Yeah, we, we've been talking, we've had meetings with the Caltrans representative and the city and the Arts Council together, and we're making, we're making progress to just sort of dividing up what needs to be done. I think from our perspective, from the Arts Council, we would be putting a request for, uh, artists, call to artists, to get that going. And so we've had different discussions about what that might look like, and again, if it's one, maybe one person doing the entire project, or a group of people, uh, doing it, or each, each panel being given out to a particular person, so.
But when you're thinking about a panel, you're thinking the five, right?
The, the, well, yeah.
The chunk of four.
Right, so it would be.
In a section.
We lost the thing, it's okay, that's all right.
An artist would do, an artist would do, yeah, like that.
There it is, yeah.
That would be like one artist.
Yeah, one artist would do that.
Or one theme with photographs or something.
That's right.
Is that gonna be big enough to be seen from the highway?
Well, I mean, we, we've had, we, we had that very discussion at one of the meetings, and, you know, people were wondering if the, you know, the oleanders are gonna grow too big, and the, and the art was too small, or, or what have you. And I, I think it's, for, for me, as an advocate of the artists themselves and a member of the Arts Council, I think it's just, what it does is just adds some interest to what is a blank wall, uh, but I think, yeah, people are gonna be zipping by quickly, and it provides a little bit of, uh, interest to a blank, what would normally be just a blank sound wall, that could be tagged and graffitied.
A bigger picture, not so much detail.
Yeah.
Want to be better than, like when you did the.
Yeah, so like this.
The nuts or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so like a painting could be something like that, or the, you know, the photograph could be something larger that ties in with, you know, the agricultural things.
Each panel is four?
Yes, each panel is four feet by five feet.
It's a good size of thought.
Right.
Pretty good size of thought.
It's, uh, yeah, pretty big.
Nude.
Yeah.
Next, we're gonna have a walking tour.
That's right.
Down the.
So the, uh, the panels, uh, have a life of about five to seven years, and there's, uh, there seems to be some budget in there for getting them replaced as time goes on and as they, you know, as they fade or get banged on, yeah.
Sorry.
You can ask, this is.
I can help you.
Yes.
Can you add?
Yeah, the question was, does the, does the vinyl allow us to clean them? Um, the short answer is I don't know, but I think so. I think it's a, it's a high-quality vinyl that would allow it to be cleaned up easier than, than not.
There's.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't.
No, I know.
I put those pictures of the parents and others.
Right.
That would be two.
Right.
The person from Caltrans has spoken a lot about that issue. Um, first of all, you don't get as much graffiti when you have real art, uh, but second of all, you don't wanna be out there defacing, you know, our artwork all the time, and so they've come up with some of these, um, settings that make it easier to clean, so that if that, somebody does spray paint it.
Yeah.
True, yeah. This, uh, this format seems to be something that Caltrans has worked on in the past, and they feel, uh, will work nicely.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
So if anybody has thoughts or knows muralists, or has thoughts about what could go into photography, um, please let Jim know. He's our referee for, for muralists and for, uh, this project and what the, what the photography might be for this project, okay? So good.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Chair, one, one comment, just being a, if I can?
Oh, yes.
Being a, a Valley girl driving on the ninety-nine and forty-one, they have murals. They seem to be tile murals.
Mm-hmm.
And I've always wondered, you know, who did them? What do they mean? And I mentioned that to somebody one time, and they said, oh, the Fresno Bee did an article on that about a year ago, and I missed it, right? I mean, what are all those? And sometimes they get graffitied, and then it looks like they can clean it up on those tile murals. Anyhow, just one thought for those of us that are curious about who created them and what they are and what they represent. It might be a website addition, Caltrans, the city, it has a lifetime, I can't, can't see any plaque being appropriate, 'cause it'd be outdated in a few years, but just one idea is maybe to, you know, give somebody a, a resource to, um, learn a little bit more, if you're not gonna pull over.
Right.
And, uh, visit our fine establishments, maybe you'll look us up and then stop next time.
In speaking with, uh, some of my fellow Arts Council executive directors, they, uh, are working on a project, uh, in Monterey County, and they did a little outreach to the community to find out what the community might like to see in some of their projects. And I thought that was a, I thought that was kind of a neat idea to toss it out. Do you wanna see historical things? Do you wanna see things that are more tied in with agriculture and the land? Do you wanna see whimsical? Do you wanna see more serious? There's our underpasses, but I thought it was, um, I thought that could be a nice thing to do for the community, get some buy-in. Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Uh, so that's two items. The first item talked about our, our partnership with the county, the second one talked about our partnership with the city, and now we're gonna talk some about our partnership with the Downtown Association and Madera Unified.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Nick Lane is Chief of Staff of Madera County. To just kind of piggyback on that last, uh, conversation, um, going back to the park and, you know, historic meetings, um, as most of you know, there's the, the Palm and the Pine on the ninety-nine, and so if you've looked at a map, um, in between sunrise and sunset, you know it's in the middle of that? The park, center of town. So we will be bringing a Palm and the Pine to the park as a component of the remodel, and maybe some verbiage around what that means and how that started, so. So going on to this item regarding the, um, dumpster alleyway project, um, as discussed before, the proposed project's gonna span, um, the alley just south of Yosemite from D to C Street. We've had a lot of interested property owners, a lot of interested business owners, and this has kind of been our, our pilot project area for the most part. So as you can see, there's a few, um, cans there, but there's really a lot of bins, and so we came up with a way to kind of just brighten that alleyway up a little bit. There's a mural that's been completed on Mr. Miller's building, and, uh, from this angle, you can see the bins. So I had a really good call with Mid Valley Disposal, who owns the bins, and also at the City of Madera, and due to some, uh, legislation changes, Mid Valley's required to have new bins, uh, come twenty twenty-three, and with that, they're open to delivering these new bins ahead of schedule to the schools, to all the kids to put murals on the bins. And, um, their ask was just to see a few renditions, a few mockups. They would ask that if the bin, let's say, is predominantly blue, try to keep a lot of the, uh, the artwork blue, and the same thing for the other colors. But, uh, they were, um, really excited to see these different renditions, and they, they were also asking if they, we could include what types of, uh, items go in those bins, and, and just kind of, kind of getting creative. So, uh, with that, I'm, I'm looking to, uh, partner more closely with MUSD. We have the city on board, and we also have the, uh, Mid Valley Disposal on board, and they're, they're, they're pretty much ready to go, uh, drop these bins at the direction of the school district. And, um, with that, that pretty much completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
What was that? They wanna know what kind of items go in the bins?
They, they, they thought it would be a good idea if the kids could paint which items should be going in the bin, so if it's recyclable.
Oh.
Or if it's green, kind of, maybe a guy pushing a lawnmower or something, or empty water bottles. I think I know where you're going.
That would be helpful, I think. Um, the, we have, we've already met with, uh, teachers in, uh, elementary schools, and we will be meeting with them again, 'cause now there's some more of them, and, uh, they're excited about doing this project, so we have buy-in there. Uh, what we need is, I'm gonna, I'm working with the schools on this, but what I'm gonna need is a, uh, inside coordinator I can work with from the school district. And so I, I thought I'd ask, uh, Brandon, who's out in the Stratistors, uh, to help me find that district contact, uh, so that we'll be able to schedule when they're gonna want them, what their renditions are gonna be, and, uh, get all that scheduled ahead of time.
Yeah, I know the fall's just around the corner, so the sooner, the better we can get with Mid Valley and work out all the logistics and, and whatnot.
Yeah.
And then start another alley somewhere else.
Right. I think these are gonna spread everywhere, I hope, well, everybody will be painting their cans, so. Anyway, so that's coming along, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's our part, one of our partnerships with, uh, with Madera Unified. Great, I've got another one coming up. Uh, I guess I could mention it right now, as a matter of fact. As long as we're on the alley and dumpster art, uh, we have found a new source of funding, uh, for our mural projects. It appears that there are, some of the new teachers hired in the school district are doing mural art with students, and so I was contacted by a middle school teacher who's in the summer school program, and she's, I think she's that king, I think it's a king, and, um, they're doing a project, uh, sort of hands-on project to work with a business owner to develop the concept for the mural, go back to their school, design it, come back to the owner, talk it through with the owner, till they come to agreement, and then they're gonna go back and get everything ready to go ahead and paint it on the wall. And, uh, and so, uh, I needed a fast test case for that, and so I called my friend, uh, Chris Miller over at Leighton's and said, you want another mural on your building? 'Cause, you know, it's a short program, you can't, you know, design too long. And he, um, so he said, sure. So the students came over, they met with him, they talked with him, very professional. They went back to their school, they did their design, they brought their rough drafts back, their, their concept drawing, they made some changes, and now they're getting their final little product done, and then they're gonna be preparing the wall and planning for the painting of that mural. And I think that's the kind of thing that other businesses might want to participate in as well, and when I met with the high school teachers from the school district, they were very excited about being able to do those kind of projects as well. So I think we're gonna have another source of muralists and, um, maybe some cool designs to look at for, uh, for buildings downtown, okay?
So that means, uh, plenty of volunteers.
Could be, it could be. This could be a community painting day. Mm-hmm. You know, when you've got a lot of blue, you can use lots of people to paint, so. So anyway, that's coming along, uh, and, um, so, and, and all, did, did we say our dumpsters are gonna be in the alley, and we're planning on having a little show when it's, uh, opening day, like a exhibit, like an art exhibit, uh, for our young muralists, when it's ready to show? Uh, Nick and I have been working with business owners down, building owners downtown to develop a list of who's interested, so we're gonna be knocking on their doors now and seeing who is, uh, interested. I just came back from another state where I snapped some pictures of what they did with their welcome to downtown on a big wall, uh, that, uh, we might wanna look at for our town as well, so. Anyway, so that's all coming along. Any other questions, comments? And next we have, uh, now we have Brandon, who wasn't able to be here in person today, uh, but he is going to talk a little bit about the very exciting summer enrichment program in general that's going on in the, in the school district, and, so can we go to Brandon?
I am here when you're ready for me.
Okay, pop on in. Oh, just a minute, we'll get you. Brandon Gillis is the Director of Visual and Performing Arts for Madera Unified School District. He has just finished his first year in that position, and he has dynamically changed, um, improved, uh, what we're doing with the arts in the schools, in the after-school program, the daytime program, the summer program, and building a theater company in Madera, and that's only his first year. And we're trying to.
Very large, large introduction. Thank you, Madam Chairperson, thank you, members of the board. I'm excited to, uh, report to you about our summer enrichment program for the arts through Madera Unified School District. This is made possible through special funding called Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, and, um, it's a significant amount of money that, um, calls out explicitly opportunities for students to have expanded opportunities in art and music. Um, with that, um, our, our daily program, which runs from June eighth through July eighth, provides students with opportunities to, um, pick up an orchestra instrument or a band instrument for the first time, or to go deeper and join in the dance ensemble. We have multiple dance offerings, including popular Latin dance, um, traditional dance provided by a community partner, All About Dance, and also traditional folkloric dancing and also traditional folkloric dancing as well. Those are very popular courses. We have multiple visual arts opportunities. Most of those are through a partnership with the Madera County Arts Council and their education program. So those artists are leading classes in two-dimensional and three-dimensional art, as well as just some one-day art projects where you can show up and get your project done in a single day. We tried to offer something for everybody. In addition, we have several theater options. We have a puppetry course where students are creating a script and to tell a story. And they're actually crafting their puppets and making their characters that go with it from beginning to end. I'm sure I'm leaving out some important opportunities, but important to note that the mural that is soon to be on Mr. Miller's building, the Leighton's Jewelers building, comes from one of our courses, our Community Art Course, which is primarily junior high and high school students led by an elementary art teacher. Her name's Shirin Gutierrez. It was great to see their process, as Dr. O'Kane mentioned. They pulled their concept together, they presented a draft to Mr. Miller, they received his feedback, they made changes. And now they're working on the logistics of how to get that installed. Some of the cool things along the way, like our opportunities, like to go on lots of field trips. So our students have been to a couple of different huge plays in San Francisco. Those are long day trips on the bus, but you know, our fourth through 12th graders really love them. They've also had opportunities to see local theater through the Madera Theater Project, which I can say more about, but I believe Mr. Core might be speaking about.
Yes.
Yeah. And so all of that wraps up July 8th. That's our summer enrichment program. It's the start of what I hope will be a significant experience for our students to have those socially, personal, intellectually transformative experiences that Madera Unified wants for our students. We're actually required by the legislation that provides the funding to provide 30 days in intercession time, which is outside of the school day, like the summer or winter session, of enrichment experiences. So the arts are a significant part of that, for sure. And overall, a general theme of our Arts Advisory Committee, our teachers and community members who make that up, a theme has been engaging the community more and providing students with an authentic opportunity for art. Not just to make art in the classroom for their portfolio, but to have something to say and get it out in front of people. And so we're really thankful for these partnerships with the Arts Council and through the Arts Authority and the Downtown Association to bring art to the public, whether it's dumpsters or on our business walls for art. And of course, many, many ideas that are out there and lots of willingness from our teachers and our students to bring art to the community, as long as we can make those opportunities possible and open the logistical hurdles for them. And that's pretty much what I have on the most exciting things going on with the arts in Madera Unified.
So we're forming lots of great partnerships between the school district and the Arts Council. And we appreciate that, Mrs. Fleek, and you can share that with the, with the school district.
Better board meeting tomorrow night.
And tell them to keep on coming. Because you know, with the kids come the parents. And so you can, you can build your, your interest in the arts through your kids and build it up to the parents.
And if you would allow me to interrupt again, I would just add that our, our staff, our advisory committee, they're mindful of the significance of showing our students that art is important and the impact that that has on the community and how this can't happen without the community's endorsement of art. So these public opportunities are really significant because it's showing that what our students are doing matters and is important and worth investing in. So can't reiterate enough. Very thankful for the partnerships made possible.
Great. Okay, well, thank you for getting out of your sickbed. I'm sorry you got hit by that.
He's the face of COVID.
Really thoughtful of you to not come over here today. I hope you get better soon. Thank you, Brandon. Any questions for Brandon? Okay, then next we're going to hear from the Downtown Association. Debbie Ray.
Before I make a report on the Downtown Association, I'd like to acknowledge Nick. I know he's involved in a lot of these projects, and he's really out there being a cheerleader for the arts and our community. And on that note, because there are so many other things that he does, I'd just like to take this opportunity to announce that Nick will be honored by the Madera Chamber of Commerce on August 18th as one of our four around 40 recipients. He doesn't know that. So this, I thought, you know, as I was sitting here, this is a perfect opportunity. So congratulations, Nick.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that.
No, you're not.
Are we having an event on August 18th?
August 18th.
Are we having an event?
Lifetime Achievement Awards. The Lifetime Achievement Awards. This is our four, it's actually called 40040.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You know, the last two years, probably skipped over a few people, so we changed the title to Four Around Forty.
That's right. That's right. Okay. It's been so long since we've had a Lifetime Achievement Award dinner.
Excuse me, I'm just getting a little emotional right now. I just need to regain my composure.
I'll be sending your sponsorship.
I'm just so proud of Nick. Okay, I'm composed.
You've got your bearings about you now? My report is brief. And back, I think it was earlier this year, Julie O'Kane, and I know some folks worked with her in taking the time to put together somewhat of a photographical essay on a considered project for an alleyway. And one of the things that I thought would be great was for the Downtown Association to take some ownership of a project and have something to work towards, to be a partner in all of this exciting creativity that's going on in our community, all focused around the Arts Authority and the proposed Cultural Arts Center. So one of the things that the Madera Downtown Association did, after receiving that presentation, they were very enthused, set up a subcommittee to follow through and start looking at how we can accomplish the eating to that point that we could have something done in these alleyways, as presented by Dr. O'Kane. So the subcommittee was set and a subcommittee chair was appointed. Unfortunately, that subcommittee chair did not call any meetings. That person has now resigned from the board. However, our president, Mona Davy, is very enthusiastic and very excited. And so she will start getting that subcommittee pulled together. And I believe that we will invite you, Julie, to the next couple of subcommittees when she gets her bearings. We've had a few hiccups the last couple of months, and so it's going to be almost like starting at page one again. But I'm excited about it. Mona is our new president, and you've worked with her, and she's really looking forward to that. So there has been also some proposals that we've seen regarding that alleyway project, but they're not that of the Downtown Association. And we'd like to make sure that we're partnering with all of you in whatever we do, so everything is cohesive and works together.
Right. Thank you. Is there going to be somebody from the city that's going to be linked into the, the planning?
There will be, but one of the first things I think that we talked about was wanting to identify before we could do anything with any alleyway, especially the one that we were looking at specifically. In fact, when it was presented to the Downtown Association, one of the first things they talked about was the parking area in that alleyway had some herbs that were raised with the trees in it. There's a lot of maintenance or upgrading that needs to be done before you could even really consider doing any artful type of work. So once we determine what needs to be done, then we thought we'd bring somebody from the city in. But we can also do it. Typically, City Manager Arnaldo Rodriguez does attend our Downtown Association meetings. We don't have any council members that attend, but he normally is there. So he's a great direct link for us.
Okay, good, good. Because I know there's some infrastructure kind of things that need to be done, and then some support from the city as, because it is a lot of city property there.
And I think something like this too, I mean, it could be as simple as once the students have done the dumpster art, and we've talked about doing these mural projects, I think all of this can tie in. I'd also like to see maybe bringing in Madera Community College and having them participate. So maybe this is something we could capture from them.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Well, the concept was if we started with murals, we could get people talking about downtown. And we could maybe, and then we started calling it an alley, and now it's taking on a life of its own. And so I'm really glad the Downtown Association is putting something together to, to bring forward to the city. That'll be a bigger master plan for what that can look like. So, thank you, Debbie. That's great. Okay, and our last item today is the theater, the theater. The capstone of our work is to eventually have a theater in downtown Madera as part of the, of the Cultural Arts Center. And a couple of things happened. One was, we needed our consultant that we hired said, you can't build a theater until you have people interested in showing up and coming. And once they do that, then you're going to need something bigger. So that's when you start to talk about building a new building, okay? And so, so we've been doing more things to get more people downtown. And then this year, back in what, January or something, formed an actual community theater project for Madera to begin to form what would be a community theater program with the idea that we would fill the house at Matilda Torres High School so much that we would show we needed to have a bigger theater. And we had a great kickoff. So I've asked.
I think you've done the, you've done the whole presentation, Dr. O'Kane. That's beautifully said.
That was the lead-in.
Thank you very much. Good night. Karen, can we go back to the PowerPoint? It's at the, my, the theater part starts at the end of my previous presentation. I'm just teasing you, Dr. O'Kane. Well, here we go. Nick Salinas, everybody. Make him feel welcome.
All right, yeah, Nick.
Don't let it go to your head.
This is just the first of many awards for Nick.
All right. So it's interesting. I started at the Arts Council in January 2020. Some of you probably know I have a background in the performing arts. I was a theater major in college, and I've been involved in theater my entire adult life. So when I came to the Arts Council, there was not much in the way of performing arts. And the board was saying, hey, you know what we need? We need performing arts. And that started to, that started to happen. And by golly, at the gala last September, we made an announcement and said, you know what we're going to do? We're going to, we're going to add more performing arts to our programming. And by gosh, it happened. Ginger Latimer came in and did acting classes in our, in our space at the Arts Council. And it was going great. And somebody said, you know, we should have an after-school program that involves theater with the grade school kids. And so that's been, that's been starting to happen. So we're excited about that. And then somebody said, maybe we should do theater, like a full-on, you know, production. And I was like, that sounds fun. And they're like, no, let's, like, maybe let's do three shows this summer. And so after I, after I tried to talk everybody down a little bit, we forged ahead. This is Ginger's classes that she was doing at our place with, with all of her kids. And so we created a partnership between the Madera Unified School District and the Arts Council to form the Madera Theater Project. And by gosh, we are, we're doing three shows this summer. We just finished a sold-out weekend of Beauty and the Beast. They were literally sold out Friday and Saturday, and the rest of the performances were darn near sold out with three seats here and four seats there. And it was, it was great. Everybody did a really good job. So we're doing Beauty and the Beast, Harvest Moon, and then we're finishing the season with Arthur Miller's All My Sons. So here's Beauty and the Beast, some, some quick snapshots of that show. Everything was fully produced, fully costumed, fully sung. And I thought they did a really, I thought they really did a great job with pulling it all together. Of course, Beauty and the Beast is based on the Disney animated feature from the 90s. It's been on Broadway. And we were fortunate to have it here. Some other pictures of that particular show. Coming up next is Harvest Moon by Jose Cruz Gonzalez. It's a dramatic piece about a family of immigrants and a magical mural. It comes to life and helps to tell a story of their lives. And it's, it's a great piece. I read the script. I've not seen any rehearsals yet, but I think they're going to be doing a great job. All My Sons is from Arthur Miller. He's the, he's also the author of Death of a Salesman. And I've been telling people that, that this show is, has the same DNA as Death of a Salesman, meaning it's not a feel-good show of the summer. But I think it's going to be excellent. They've got a great cast. Brad Myers is head of the Fresno State Theater Department, and he's gathered together some of the all-stars in the Central Valley acting world. And I think it's going to be a really solid production. So we're excited about that. Questions about the Madera Theater Project?
I saw the show Beauty and the Beast last Saturday night. It was really great. It was a nice blend of students and some of the more seasoned acting professionals and so forth. So great, great, great.
Yeah. It went, it went really well, and I think everybody had a lot of fun. We had a lot of student involvement in that, as well as these seasoned professionals that you were talking about, so.
And this is another partnership between Madera Unified School District and the Arts Council.
Yep.
Without them, we would not have been able to start a theater program. And it's good quality.
And a good, good partnership. Brandon Gillis has been a great partner in this, and we've been working together very, very well in these endeavors, so. Harvest Moon, as you see, opens July 7th. It's coming up quick. Our ticketing system is online. So I encourage you to come check it out over at Matilda Torres.
Can we, are you prepared to announce anything, Mrs. Unti?
I can, you want me to talk about it? I wasn't sure if it was like, ready to go, so that's why I didn't say anything. So the author of Harvest Moon, Jose Cruz Gonzalez, we haven't even talked to you, so I'm, where does he live? Oh, he's in San Luis Obispo. So the author lives here in California. And Tina set up an arrangement to bring him out to Madera to, to talk to the group and to do a little talk back after the show, and to meet with some, some folks beforehand and get to know him and find out a little bit more about him and his work. So thank you for pulling all that together and making that happen. So we're excited about that. And that's going to be happening on the 15th, I believe, which is the.
Yeah, Friday the 15th.
Friday the 15th. So that's going to be really cool.
Can you send something to the board members that might want to?
Regarding that? Of course, sure.
Good.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be great.
That's another twist. Once you start up these kinds of things, being able to interact with the author, being able to interact with the theater company are all really cool. And, and you know, it's bringing people from other communities to Madera. There's, I've found out, there's lots of actors who are looking for venues to perform. And, and so they'll become part of our theater company as well. And that'll spread the talent to Madera, as well as some of the other towns around. So, good for us.
Yeah, all good. Thanks, everybody.
So I invite you to go see Harvest Moon. It starts July 7th and goes to the 16th. I think you'll be as pleased with that as you were with Beauty and the Beast. I was, I was pretty excited. I got to see the opening night of that, and I thought.
Chairman O'Kane.
Yes?
Note that Harvest Moon is, I forgot to mention this, is for mature audiences. It involves some foul language, some use of alcoholic beverage, and use of marijuana.
Advertising for cameras. Thank you. It's not a kid's, don't bring the children.
They're going to pass her on a joint or something, is there?
Now it's legal anyway, so.
Okay, other member and staff reports?
I would just like to say that the Historical Society is having the clock fixed.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, finally. We found someone from, I think it's Minnesota, that could fix the clock. Because we could never find anyone that knew how to fix the clock. And he came and saw it and was amazed how it was still there. And it wasn't made out of wood. It was made out of something else. But, yeah, they're supposed to be fixing it, hopefully, for the last time, and it'll work forever, hopefully.
Good. At least our, the rest of our lives. That's all we care about.
Additional note on that, if I may. I've worked with a local hotel owner that's going to be. I've worked with a local hotel owner that's going to be comping their rooms at no cost to save some funding for the Historical Society. And then if we can also leverage maybe our business partners in terms of lunch and dinner, to have these folks who are going to be in town for about a week just to mitigate our internal costs. Chris Mar Scotty's volunteered to do a few dinners, as well as a couple other sandwich shop owners. But if you know anybody who owns a business, that's three gentlemen that'll be in town for about a week.
That's very nice, thank you.
Yeah, that's a cool idea. Okay, any other reports? Okay, then, before we adjourn, our next meeting is scheduled for, don't write it down yet, is scheduled for July 25th. But I'm wondering if we could skip that meeting and have our next meeting be in August.
You know, it's interesting, the fewer meetings we have, it seems the more progress we make.
On that note, we're going to, we're going to eliminate the July meeting, and our next meeting will be August 22nd.
Very good.
27?
22nd, 2-2.
Oh, 22nd.
Yeah.
All right. We have plenty of time, huh? Just hammer for that time.
Okay, there's nothing else, then, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all for presenting, coming, and being involved. And Debbie?